We acknowledge that Tri-City's community television operates on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Kwakwutlam First Nation. We thank the Kwakwutlam who continue to live on these lands and care for them along with the waters and all that is above and below.
On November 24, 2025, Kwakwutlam's council reviewed the urban forest management strategy, early findings, and key directions. The manager of parks, Kathleen Reinheimer, presented initial data on canopy conditions, environmental pressures, and priority areas for further analysis. The report outlines the key directions that will inform the city's long-term urban forest plan. Tri-City's community television was there and brings you this report. I'm Yuna Fahim.
Thank you, Chair. I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a report of the general manager parks, recreation, culture, and facilities regarding urban forest management strategy, early findings, and key by the senior manager parks, and the recommendation is before you on screen.
Great, thank you. Ms. Reinheimer.
To go through the early findings and key direction strategy. The agenda covers basic urban forest to the community, baseline research and analysis that's been done, community engagement outcomes, recommendations, and then next steps. As far as the benefits of urban forests, they're pretty well documented, and they fall into two different categories: the quality of life and creating livable communities is a really critical, making Kwakwutlam a livable and viable community. It impacts people's mental health, physical health, as well as provides benefits, cools during the summer, increases property values, and provides recreational opportunities. In terms of the environmental benefits, they're quite extensive, and to summarize here, wildlife habitat they provide, the urban forestry, the urban forest cleans the air, provides stormwater management, and carbon capture. In terms of our current conditions, the work that's been done documents that Kwakwutlam currently is at 52% canopy cover, which is a map that uses LiDAR radar to measure the height and the extent of trees in the community, and within the urban containment bounds us at 33%. So really important information is included in this graph. As cities densify, by definition, that we in less urban canopy cover. If you look at the end of the graph where you have the most dense communities, you also have the lowest canopy cover. In a lot of ways, Kwakwutlam at 33% within the urban, quite a success measure, given the speed and extent 2025 years. In the analysis, there is an assessment of strengths and weaknesses, so for sure, the city has done a really good job of preserving some significant tracts of, there's an urban gen that really is in a class in the region. As well, there's Kwakwutlam River Parks, as well, Hoi Scott, just within a couple blocks of here, but across the city, aligned with the watersheds as well. The city's done a great job of recognizing the importance of the urban forestry, forest in general, and doing tree risk assessment, and engaging the public in urban forestry initiatives, both programming and hands-on volunteerism. Okay, for some reason, this is not clicking. Oh, there we go. In terms of the gaps, those are also not terribly surprising. We have some gaps in the comprehensive nature of the data we have on the current tree inventory. We have some gaps in species, some concerns about species diversity, and the need for a citywide plan for prioritizing where we plant trees, where there's opportunities, and where there's the best benefit. Also, Kwakwutlam hasn't got in place any compensation funding related to trees that can't be planted in development, and we lack a comprehensive strategic direction for natural areas management. In terms of the community engagement that happened in the spring of 2023, it was a pretty comprehensive process with an online survey, pop-up events, presentations to a range of organizations, and that brings us some significant insights from the community. Certainly, we have an extremely informed and supportive community that values urban forest and agrees on the consensus that they are a critical part of the environmental and quality-of-life health of the community. And of course, there's also concern about the impact of development on the urban forestry, potential barriers that prevent people from planting trees on their own property related to space, cost, or knowledge, as well as, of course, overall, generally, a satisfaction with the services that are provided in this area. It is worth noting that that engagement happened prior to the provincial housing legislation adoption. When you look at the satisfaction ratings from a graph perspective, you can see highlighting the areas of concern, again, are repeated, the concern about protecting trees during development, making sure we plant and replacement-plant trees at an adequate pace, and then opportunities for expanded public education and engagement. To build on success, it's really important to note that Kwakwutlam's current policies and practices have created a fairly successful urban forest, but if we focus on that, this strategy can make huge difference over time by proactively caring for the forested land, which is a very significant, probably 75% to 80% of the parkland across the city, enhancing tree planting requirements citywide related to development. Strategic tree planting plan will answer all the questions about where we have opportunities and where we'll get the best impact in terms of both a resilient and sustained canopy cover. Increasing species diversity, I think it's equally a concern on the street trees, but also within the forested areas, and then expanding public education and participation in caring for the urban forest. So building on this success is the result of focusing on things that are within the city's purview to deliver. One of the examples I want to show is the current policy that is in place on Burke Mountain specifically, that requires tree planting based on rezoning on private property, but then also has diligently planted street trees. And over the last 20 years, there's really impressive impact on those streets as they've grown, as the trees have matured, and the trees on both sides of the private property line are thriving and making a huge difference in that neighborhood. So in terms of achievable goals, the strategy focus will be on enhancing planting and stewardship on city property, creating creative problem-solving for the high-density areas like the city center, and as the density is increasing in the city, and then opportunities for partnership with the school district. There's quite a strong opportunity that will basically help inform and educate the school children at the same time as greening the school property, and of course, increase community engagement, education, and volunteer opportunities. One of the approaches is to incentivize the planting of trees on private property and ongoing education and care so the community is connected to and values the urban forest generally. By focusing on incentive-based tree planting rather than restrictive bylaws, the goal is to ensure that private property owners have lots of opportunity, they can still manage, they have the flexibility to manage trees in future on their property, but there's no hesitation to get trees planted and growing. Right now, our bylaw focuses on sensitive areas, both riparian and steep slope, to protect the ecological value and the slope stability. It currently has a low administrative burden. It acts to support and encourage the establishment of a resilient and long-term urban forest without adopting a heavy regulatory process. One of the big recommendations is to establish, to basically expand what's currently on Burke Mountain, that is, that there's minimum tree planting that has to go on based on the size of the lots, and then when that's not possible, there's a cash-in-loo system, the collection of funding that will then be able to go into tree planting and maintenance across the whole city. So right now, that, the cash-in-loo system doesn't exist at all, and expanding it across every type of development is quite impactful, along with, of course, having real clear goals about, based on the size of a lot, how many trees should ideally be planted there? And as I say, this is actually building on the success of the Burke Mountain development. Now, in terms of the strategy, we're at the early findings and key direction stage, to be followed by the development of a draft strategy through the rest of this fall, hopefully returning to council in early, in early in the new year with a draft strategy, and then sharing that publicly with all the interest holders, both the committees and the stakeholder groups, and then with the goal of bringing a final strategy to council by the end of T1 in 2026. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Marsden, followed by myself, and then councillor Mazurullah.
Great, thank you very much. Just get back to this report here. So I appreciate the report and the work that you've put into it, that's all great. Just a couple of thoughts here. The 40% in the Metro report, the, what they call their aspirational goal, what was that number based on? Can you give us some background on that? Was that some statistical data? Was it some scientific work, or was it, we grabbed a number that sounded solid?
Through the chair, my understanding is that the Metro system went through an exercise, it didn't include Kwakwutlam, or as far as I know, any other community, to arrive a statistical goal, and it was based on assumptions that tried to predict the amount of growth, the amount of development, but also what the carrying capacity of each community, what kind of housing requirement they would be adopting. So it really is a theoretical exercise at this point, that we didn't have a role in developing.
Okay, all right. So I support setting targets, setting goals, okay? I don't, again, I sit on Metro Van's, I'm vice-chair at Metro Van with the Air Quality, Climate, and Flood Committee, and we've talked a lot about goals, but really need to be science-based, number one. Number two, I think, I don't know that that went through that piece here, in terms of what Metro Van did in coming up with their numbers, so I'm not tied to that number 40. The fact that we have a significant amount of space outside of the urban containment boundary, it's good, the number looks okay inside, but we obviously are changing. I think the impacts we've seen in terms of the reduction of tree canopy, we can attribute directly to Burke Mountain in large degree, just because there are significant, there's significant housing been built up there that didn't exist 10, 15, 20 years ago. So I'd be interested in seeing what those numbers and how they stack up. So to look and say, I don't have a target, I don't think we have enough data to look and say what the number should be, I don't think it should be 40. Maybe it should be 45, maybe it should be 32, don't know, because, again, we don't have a lot of data around that to say what, where should it be? I do absolutely support the replanting efforts. I think from a city perspective, we can take a look at what we're doing and how we can accelerate that. I know it speaks to some results a couple of years back. I know the giving trees out at local events is popular with residents. Can't get the one to grow in my yard, I don't know what I'm doing wrong, but it's just, it's still there, but not growing as much as I thought it might have. But I am challenged by some of the stuff we, or not challenged, but we need to be cautious when we talk about the type of housing we've got, the towers, and then the planting on those podiums and that sort of stuff. Obviously, what we saw in our courtyard just outside City Hall with the roots and the problem with the membrane, and thus the leaking down below. So again, I really think the placement of the trees is critical, and we need to see how do we make it do it. Cash-in-loo, not a fan, unless you have a fully articulated program that you're going to present to me in its entirety. I need to know how you're going to collect it and how you're going to spend it, because as we've seen with our daycare program, we're taking cash-in-loo. That's the easy thing for the developer, I'll just write you a check. What are we going to do with it? So we've amassed some money in our daycare fund, I haven't seen the framework on how we're distributing that. How are we doing it? How are we utilizing that fund? So if part of the work going forward is going to be a cash-in-loo system, it needs to have a very, very clearly articulated process on how we're going to use that and what it's going to deliver for us. If it's just used to fund the current tree planting programs we have, I'm not going to support it. I would prefer to look and say, you know what? Some of the challenges we're going to have going forward are the new housing legislation. You know, we're going to get far more lock coverage with the provincial regulations foisted upon us than we would have historically, and so if the pushback has to be, we need some trees, so be it. Let's push back a little bit, because I think we were methodically figuring out how to develop and grow our city out, and what the province has done is really thrown all that out the window. The, so I've got firsthand experience or secondhand experience, obviously, my mother lives in an old particle will, as do I, and she had a number of trees in her yard that were concerning. They fronted the front of the yard, and as an elderly lady, she was concerned for her safety. She was concerned, trees blowing over, hitting her house, and so she made the decision to have them removed. Some of them were just useless tree trunks, but then she was expected to replant with some stuff. And so she now has the four or five vibrant trees that she's replanted or are great, she's maintaining them, that's wonderful. I like that program, and I think that's the type of thing to do. So when you talk about taking the Burke Mountain program and bringing it down to the rest of Kwakwutlam, I support that. And then when we talk about planting new trees to replace the old, when we do have construction, I think we've got to figure out how to do it, because again, figure out where it can be placed, how it can be placed, how we can keep it alive, and how we can do it in a way that's not labor-intensive on staff. Because the one challenge I did see with our current process, as my mother was going through it, is how labor-intensive it was in terms of she had to post her bond, she had to plant the trees, there was follow-up, they had to be alive for a certain period of time, it still is alive, but again, the, it was very labor-intensive, and I don't know if there's some streamlining we can do on process that would make it easier for the homeowner and easier on staff in terms of management long-term. But I know we've got folks in the room today, and we've got folks across the city that, you know, we like trees, we do want to see them, I mean, we do want to try and maintain them, we want green space, people like green space, it's just going to be, how do we balance this out going forward? I don't have the answers. This has some of them, but there's a couple of pieces I think are, we still need to do some work on. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I've got myself next, then councillor Mazurullah, followed by councillor Mandero. Following up where councillor Marsden left off, yeah, we like trees, right? People like trees, but I think what's often underestimated is the health value to trees, and I think that that's something that I think we can do a little bit more research. I'm fortunate, in Metro Vancouver and a couple of committees, I've had doctors come in and just talk about the, you know, the prescription for spending time in forest and being near trees, and of course, the whole, you know, the issue around carbon and sequestration. One of the things that I wanted to highlight, and it's mentioned in the report, and that's the diversity of trees that we have. We have a really good urban tree canopy now, at least compared to others, but because we have one of the more robust tree canopies and a growing community, we're also losing tree canopy at one of the highest rates. And I guess that's just the combination of having something to start with and going through a transition. So I'm really worried about, as we go through this transition, a couple of things. One is where we'll have the space to plant trees, particularly with the new provincial legislation, so that's certainly a concern. I think there is probably a role for cash-in-loo, I'd rather have cash than no trees, but to councillor Marsden's point, I also want to make sure that the cash is used to actually facilitate an increase in tree planting, not just a, you know, buy your way out of a requirement. So I want more work around just how that program would operate, and with the idea of how is it actually going to increase tree planting. The other thing is the, and one of the slides that you showed there, I think it was maybe slide 11 there, that showed neighborhoods, and when I was living up on Burke Mountain, I was in a forest, an acreage in a forest, and I saw the trees come down, and I saw new trees going up, and it's great to see, we're starting to see those, what I would say more of a manicured-looking boulevard, more what you'd see in some of the places like Vancouver, although those trees have been there for many more years, but they're all the same tree. There tend to be varieties of maple and ash and some of the others, not necessarily native species, but they provide tree canopy and everything during the summertime, but they're not representative of the diversity of the trees that we're losing. And I spoke to this, on this matter before, and of course, what we hear is, well, it's really hard to plant a cedar tree in a boulevard because of its shape and its watering requirement. But how do we go through and sort of say, okay, maybe this is the right type of tree because it's, you know, narrow trunk and it grows above the, you know, the cars and the vehicles, but how do we ensure that we're still maintaining that diversity of trees, that we're finding place to replace the Douglas fir and the cedar trees?
Through the chair, councillor Hodge. Interestingly enough, I just came from a vacation in Greece where I was absolutely shocked by the number of conifers that are thriving in very constrained streetscapes, including species of pine that branches up high, so it has a flat top in nature, as well as some, a range of other coniferous species. And so I think it's a challenge for us as an industry and as a regional urban forestry group to think about how we can get within the production stream trees that are more diverse than what we currently have. So one of our big challenges is when we have a list of approved species, and of course, then whether it be the project manager or developer goes looking for them and buys whatever they can buy, and unfortunately, that puts us into a squeeze, the growers are having a hard time creating value out of the trees that we ask for. So it was one of the ideas that has come from the community, that there could be a regional table to support expansion and experimentation, to broaden out what we're using and where it will do well, because that is the challenge that we're in, for sure, and diversity, very similar within the forested area as well. And I just want to maybe catch this opportunity to say that one of the intents isn't to say that we won't measure anything, it's about what's our prime KPI, and in this case, our measurement can be really validly, the measures like the diversity of species that are in all of the categories of urban forest, as well as all of the other measures around successful, how many trees that are planted live for the first five years, et cetera. So there's real harsh account, or really discreet accountability measures that are intended to be included in the implementation plan, so that it's not just a, in 25 years, will there be a measurement that reflects all of this work, but that on an ongoing annual basis, we can track progress.
And I think that's pretty important, because again, you know, the tools that we're using, whether it's just aerial photography, yeah, in the summertime, when the maples all go wide like this, it looks like we've got a great tree canopy, but in actual fact, that's not what we had before, and that's why I speak to the biodiversity, is also that in the winter seasons, when the conifer trees are still there, that we need to make sure that we've still got that biodiversity, and that we're making sure that they're planted in areas where they will do well. I think you mentioned here, school grounds, an excellent opportunity to plant where we've got open spaces, where they've got room to spread out. I know having planted trees in school grounds, years before I was on council, I undertook a project at Lee Elementary School, we thought we had 14 classes, so we went and we got 14 trees and planted them on Earth Day. But again, they had to be a certain size because of requirements of having mature trees in an area that's got a heavy traffic impact. So again, you know, trying to get the right species, plant them in the right place, and also looking for the opportunities to plant more mature trees, so we get that replacement much, much faster. I've talked in the past about tree moving, or even in cases where developers are required to buy the trees years in advance. I know we've done that in a couple of projects we've got coming up, where we said, we know we're going to need the trees in three years, let's start growing them now so they get three more years of growth when we plant them. And I know that comes with challenges in terms of watering and care, but I think we have to look at all of that as part of the strategy. I'll just quickly, I've got a couple of other points that we're going, looking at. You had mentioned, again, the data, I think the data is really important, both getting accurate data for today. Targets, I think, are important, but I think they also have to be realistic and achievable. And finally, I know that we've, and others may touch on this, but we have had some emails from the community, and thank everybody for being here today and for your engagement, and I think we had about 1,800 people in one form or another engaged in the plan to date, and this is just the first draft. But one of the things that came up in one of the emails is just the idea, and it's often talked about, is the bylaws and the tree-cutting bylaws, and that is something that, you know, has been talked about for years, different cities do it differently, and maybe just you could speak to where we are today and why staff is supportive of the current plans.
Thank you. In a snapshot, Kwakwutlam has what's known as a permissive bylaw process, that it does very little to discourage or to create any incentives for people not to grow trees on their private property. That is an outcome that is, I think, part of the success, why we're still at 33% canopy cover despite the kind of growth that Kwakwutlam's been through. We've been asked to go back and do a little bit more research to actually compare the impact, but human nature being what it is, when there are really solid rules that say you could never cut down a tree, or if you have a tree more than a couple of inches across the, in terms of girth, you're going to have to go through a lot of process and cost to be able to remove it, human nature looks at that and says, do I really want to go there? And that actually is a perverse disincentive that stops people from planting the tree in the first place. One of our clear convictions is that people will plant trees when they have the information, so this is about the right tree in the right place. Often, people are afraid of having a huge, big hemlock or dug fir on their property line or on their property, and you could see where that comes from, whereas when trees are planted, if they're planted because they fit that space and will thrive there, they actually contribute a great deal over the life of that, whether, even if that's only a 20-year span. So philosophically, Kwakwutlam's taken the stance of permitting the removal of two trees per year, and, but having permit requirements, anything past that, and that actually has allowed us to work collaboratively with the property owners in a way that encourages them to both plant trees and value the trees that they have, and it doesn't run any risks of people thinking, all I really have to do is kill this tree and the problem solved. Because as somebody who's a horticulturist who's grown trees for a lot of years, I know how easy it is to kill a tree, and when we inadvertently say, here's all the hoops you're going to have to jump through if you want to add a shed or change your driveway, any of those things going, or in stratas, if it becomes more of a nuisance than not, unfortunately, having the rules doesn't stop people from removing the trees. So what we're trying to do is think creatively about all the ways we can actually go on side with property owners and go, wouldn't this be great? We can support you making those decisions, making the right decisions, making sure that you have the right information to support that. We can support you making those decisions, making the right decisions, making sure that you have the right information to support that. And then the the question around removal of trees that's that's linked to development. That's the other part of the practical reality is that Coquillam has very, very extensive obligations to increase housing in this community. And by definition, we don't want the creation of new housing to be at war with the survival of the urban forest. We want to find ways to meet in the middle and make those two stronger at the same time. So it isn't a them and us kind of situation.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, I'm I'm got more people lit up now. I see Council Mazzarolo, followed by Council Mandeville and then John Locke.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Hodge. Thanks for the presentation, Ms. Ms. Reimheimer. It's it's been a while waiting for this one. Twenty twenty-three, just just maybe a question, general questions to staff. Was the delay because of the provincial housing legislation? Is that mainly what took this one so long?
Yes, yes, quite a number of projects were delayed actually in twenty-three, late twenty-three and twenty-four because of the legislation really took over. Multiple departments involved in 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 advancing a number of mandated projects from the province that could not be delayed.
Okay, okay, no, just curious. I agree with you that Monday Park is absolutely one of our crown jewels in this city, one hundred percent. Can you go to slide number six? So a couple of questions and comments on this one. It's been touched on already, so I won't go over too much of it, but the the species diversity. If I understand you correctly, essentially, right now, there's not a financial incentive for nurseries to grow the trees that we need or that would have a diverse trees, diverse species of trees in order for for cities to purchase and then plant because they don't see necessarily the demand there. So it might not be financially feasible for them to do, whereas they know certain species always get picked. And there is therefore, they know they have some cost certainty or they have some certainty that they will make revenue from the purchase of those trees. Do I understand that correctly?
Through the chair, with a little bit nuance is that the the growers are trying to make money. And so they're focusing on the trees that they know are are steady growers and will be at the acceptable size in the shortest number of years. So there there are species that we would love to see in our streets, but will take another year or two to grow to that size. And so it really is about these entrepreneurs trying to make a buck. And it is, it it's a pretty straight calculation, how many years do they have to be in the ground before they're ready to be planted?
Okay, so I there's, I can see the financial incentive then for them to to not want to use up the space that they have, which is limited for the tree that is going to give them the most turnover so that they can make, okay. Is there a way potentially that, and this would take, I think, some coordination here? But if we, you know, with other cities that are maybe focused on wanting to increase their tree canopy. As I think you hinted on, if if there's some coordination saying to these, these, I think, nurseries, if I have the the term correctly. You know, you grow them, yes, it might take an extra year, but we will purchase them. And if we give them that certainty, they're be might might be more inclined to to use up the space, which is limited, to plant a tree that may take an extra year. Is would that work potentially?
Through the chair, I believe there's a lot of scope for coordinating that kind of regional kind of direction. Because right now, the nursery owners only know, am I selling out what I've got or not? And so creating, pulling all that information together, making sure that we're clear about what would make the difference. And then delivering that to the industry, I think there's quite a bit of room for creative problem solving there.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. If we can go to slide twelve. I think this is the slide that we're, the recommendations are here. I can't remember if it was on a slide or not. The the forty percent, it's been touched on a little bit by a previous councillor. So we we're not sure where or how Metro Vancouver got that number. It's it's there, it's been there, I'm looking at the footnote of the page four of the report. It's been there for about twenty-odd years or so. But there's no, we don't know, we don't have any data necessarily behind it on how they got there, what the advantages of it being forty. As opposed to sixty, as opposed to twenty, we don't know, Mr. England.
Through the chair to Council Mazzarolo, in addition to Kathy's response around that, the short answer is no, we're not certain we weren't engaged in that process. But having worked in in the field of urban forestry for twenty-five years, like the original genesis of forty percent actually came from an American nonprofit, American Forest. And they came up with these targets for different climatic zones in North America, us being Pacific Northwest. And it was forty percent. And there was limited science behind that. And that that group a number of years ago actually clarified that they don't actually agree with that approach, that that broad climatic zone approach anymore. And they think that it has to be specific to an area and nuanced for that particular area or city. So that that organization that originally was bringing these targets forward two decades ago actually has suggested there needs to be a more localized and nuanced approach to that. So I've I've seen in my career that that number has really been, has really stuck around and it probably did influence. But I, we don't know exactly where the forty percent came from. It's just something that's been out there for a long time, that it, this old idea that that was the right number to ensure that you had a healthy urban forest in this part of the world.
And by career, you're an arborist by trade, right, Mr. England?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. You you just to back up, you know what you're talking about. Okay, back to back to slide or just to finish off on that part here about the forty. So it sounds like it's somewhat arbitrary to an extent, the forty percent. Or that it it's been further refined over the years, okay. Back to slide twelve, just a couple of the the five points here, and it's more elaborate, it's elaborated further in the report, which is on page five. Enhance tree planting, stewardship of trees and forests and city property, I agree with. Creative solutions to planting on high density areas. I do share some concerns here about podiums as well. I I would, I would prefer we have tree canopy on podiums and on the rooftops of of high, high-rise buildings and and medium density buildings. But I I would like to see more information there with respect to what are the costs? Because if we put a program there and the strata comes by, because these are strata properties, and goes, this is too costly, and then just removes it, and we've spent the money. I don't know if that helped us, I know it doesn't help us. So it, I would like to see it, I just need to know more data or more information there so that I can make a better decision. I do think on the higher density areas, I do agree, especially in in high density, it's it's going to be a challenge to get tree canopy. We are going to have to squeeze every centimeter we can out of boulevards, out of meridians or, you know, between traffic or traffic lanes. It's going to have to be a priority for us to look to get every little bit of space. I am going to push on this, though. It's not as high density as medium and and high, but townhouses. I I understand the concept is for for medium and high, you need to excavate to build the underground parking. Okay, and some, and most of the time, the most efficient way to do that is you go right to the lot line or pretty close. I think there could be some flexibility there, maybe there's a group of trees that are in a, and we have this actually in Glen. If you go off of, if you go off pipeline, I can't remember, the name's not coming to me right now. The development there recently, about last ten years. Was that a little further down on pipeline, a little further south?
Windsor Gate?
Windsor Gate, thank you. There are spots there where the development happened and there's maybe a ten meter by ten meter just area that is trees. And it, I I don't, I don't know if, haven't had it explained to me, but if there was a policy at the time when that development was taking place that permitted that, or, you know, that we would take a look at the land, at at the land before it was cut down and excavated, excavated. Is there an opportunity to retain some of that tree cover there? Because when I go by it every single time, I always see that and go, why can't we do that in other places? So that's my comment on the high density one, I think we could look at a bit more, but townhouses especially. You don't need to go underground and dig out a a car park. I'm I'm frustrated and it's mostly because I live beside a a lot right now that is being developed through townhouse, with town housing. I like the town housing. But it was, it was nothing but trees prior. And in order to get this development, it's just been clear cut. And there are spots now that are being built and not being built on that lot that I'm like, I don't know for certain if there was a tree there, but there's enough space now that you probably could have kept a few if there was one there. So I'm, I'm, I would ask staff to look into. When we see townhouse developments come through the door, especially ones on larger lot line or or larger developments, let's take a look at the tree layout. And is there a way to design the townhouse complex that can retain some of it? Because you don't need to excavate the whole thing. I know it's more efficient if you did. At the trade off, I'm willing to consider. That's for the townhouses anyway. Continuing here, employer, exploring opportunities for planting on school sites, yes. I know school district forty-three has their own challenges with the increase in population and and, you know, having to rebuild a lot of schools. But there are spots on their properties, we know they're not going to be building a school. It was mentioned before, there are slopes near the lot lines. Absolutely, let's engage with school district forty-three, we have a great relationship with them. That might be, that's an opportunity that I think we should not pass up. Increase in community engagement, this is an absolute education and volunteer opportunities. Ultimately, the way this problem is going to get solved is more people treat this as a must and therefore more people plant more trees on their private property. That's not going to happen unless we continue to educate the public of the value of this. And then providing incentives, I'm I'm all for looking at incentives. Let's take a look at what's available and what what can work. One thing I will, one, my last comment, it's on page six. The two trees per year that you can take down without any conversations. Why is it two trees per year? Why isn't it, here's my example, if if we're going to make the comment, or I made the comment, that the forty percent number is a bit arbitrary, why is two there? What's the data behind two? Is that number arbitrary? Why isn't it six? Why isn't it one?
Go to, I'm struggling.
Through the chair to Council Mazzarolo. So the the history of that number is is the the inception of the bylaw. And it it did, I think Kathleen did a good job of describing kind of the the disincentives that I think council at the time was aware of around being too restrictive with the bylaw and what that might mean for people in terms of their decision to plant trees on their property or not. So arriving at two, I think, was a balance. I I don't want to put words in the mouth of the people at the time, but essentially it was a balance between not letting some, a property owner cut down every tree on a property if they happen to have extensive tree cover. But then, you know, not being overly restrictive so that you didn't create the disincentive that if they they planted some trees, their kids brought trees home, and then fifteen years later, they realized that really wasn't the right tree in that spot, that they could cut it down. So, yeah, and it wasn't hard to have science, but the, that was the idea of the two trees.
Yeah, okay. When did the bylaw, when was the, when did that bylaw first come through? I think it's older than that.
I think it's before me. Sorry, I just have to quickly look that up, but I think it is older than that, I believe it was probably oh nine, but I have to have a look.
Okay, so my comments on that are, you know, if it is oh nine, if it's a bit earlier. It's a different city now, right? This is, you know, the Coquillam I grew up in was was predominantly single detached homes. Not much high density or medium density. I can understand we would have a, we would have had a large, a higher degree of tree canopy at that time. You may have been able to say, two trees per lot at that time makes sense, we would still retain a lot of tree canopy. Our city is very different now, and it is going to be very different moving forward, especially when you look at the TOAs. You look at the number of neighborhood plans we have for medium to high density, you know, that are not near TOAs. Austin Heights is a good example, Myardville is a good example, Burke Mountain Village is a good example. These aren't into TOAs, but they are going to have higher density. So I think, I think a relook at that. And I I think there's also a bit of a misconception out there that people are out there running around looking to chop down trees all the time. I don't think that's the case. If that number were to be reduced from two to one, it gives you a little bit more time for the homeowner to rethink about cutting down every tree on your lot. Or not everyone, but you save one per year and maybe reevaluate that decision. I'm also not convinced that people are being blocked from planting trees because of, you know, the two tree limit. I would like more information on that two tree limit and why it was there and what is the harm, if any, if we go even a small step to one? That doesn't stop people from when they want to develop, they have that route. It doesn't stop people if they want to cut more, they can go through the process, which isn't as lab, is not as intensive as as I think it, some would say it is, but more intensive than just being able to, I I will grant you that. So that that would be my ask in this area for the for the two, two tree per lot. I think more information is required there. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you, we've got Council Mandeville, followed by Council John Locke.
I was going to say, I I don't know if Mayor, Mayor Stewart is listening, because I know he normally has an explanation of why Coquillam landed where it landed. Because I remember, you know, when I first sat at this table, I was siding, you know, I moved from Oklahoma. And you, if you're building a house, you are required to plant trees. And it was at least two, depending on the lot size. And also, if you're selling it, you have to make sure that you have those trees. So, right, so so you have that opportunity to keep the number of trees in, you know, in check. But anyway, what I was going to comment about today is in regards to, first of all, the forty percent. Have we looked internationally, because I know I always talk about Singapore when I talk about this, because they moved from a concrete jungle to a green city or like they call themselves, they are like a a city in nature, right, but coming from a concrete jungle. And there was a test that was done and I think other, you know, international cities still use that. It's called the three thirty, three hundred rule, right? And you're you're nodding your head, I think you know it, which means, you know, can you see three trees from your home, school or workplace? Is 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 there three canopy cover shading at least thirty percent of the surrounding neighborhood? Can you find a park within three hundred meters of the building, right? So it's a, it's a way that you can actually do a survey to the community to say, you know, can you see the three thirty, three hundred rule? And we can get an idea, you know, ourselves, without having to come up with a number, an arbitrary number to see if you have got enough canopy. So it'd be nice, I I think, if we ever would like to do that, I think it would give us something that's tangible, right? Because we are hearing from the comedic, from the community about it. The other thing I want to talk about was, you know, we're talking about technology, right? Now we've got AI and we have everything. Do you know that there's now GPS for trees? You can actually track the trees through GPS. And again, it'll be something that'll be really good, you know, and I know students at universities would take that in a habit to create, you know, in app in order to do that. And again, it comes us, it makes us have that data so that we can make solutions that are based on data. So I would encourage us to see if we can partner with a university to look into that. Lastly, on the cashing loop, I think it's a little, because my my first reaction was like, no, I don't support that. But can you explain if you, what you mean is having almost like a density transfer? What do we do with density transfer, right? So for trees, it would be off-site mitigation or or tree banking, right? To where they don't have a space to plant a tree, they give us money and then staff go and plant the tree somewhere where there's space. So again, I think it's because we don't tell the story. So the money comes in, even if we go plant the tree and we don't have the GPS for the trees. So, you know, nobody knows what really happened. So can you explain a little more of what you mean by cashing loop?
Sure, through the mayor, I should say as well that we currently have incomplete data, all of our street trees that are formerly planted are GPSed. And we have, the system shows us when they were planted, what their species is, when they were last pruned, et cetera. So we're doing, it's just, we're not complete. For sure, it is exactly like that, the idea that the community will benefit even when there's inevitable density happening. There will be an opportunity to take that funding and plant trees where it's available. So this is very integrated into the need for a citywide planting plan. So that needs to help us prioritize where it will be the most impactful to plant the trees. But for sure, the idea is that just because there's underground utilities or there's other constraints on a lot, that that means that that lot can't support the number of trees that ideally it should. That funding then gets transferred to the city to a reserve that we would report out on an annual basis where it got planted, map, make sure that we're completely transparent about that. And then that actually says that neighborhood is benefiting even though there's a short-term loss of tree canopy. There's actions that can happen that will revert to. There's a, actions that can happen that will revert to the ideal kind of get us as close as possible to the tree canopy we're looking for.
Yeah. So to that, I'll say words matter, right? So let's not use cash and loot.
Oh, okay.
Let's, let's use, you know, offsite mitigation. Let's use tree banking. So that people know that's exactly what we're doing, right? So that's my comment on that. Lastly, um, I wanted to talk about the native species. So we are having that problem, but we also know that if we have native species, species, we are also going to be supporting the native wildlife. What can we do in order, because you, you mentioned the problem. I think someone earlier mentioned having to, you know, commit and purchase the trees ahead of time. I think from a business perspective, a business owner would appreciate that. Because I already have someone who already bought the trees, even though they're coming in three or four years. They already paid for them. So now I'm okay to have this lot because I'm not going to just keep these trees and I don't know if they're going to be bought, right? So maybe there's a space that we can do through economic development as well to have that linkage between the need of the trees that we need because we know how important it is to have this native species uh, to also supporting the businesses that have this uncertainty that makes them make choices that are not aligned with where we want to go. And that'll be all my comments.
Do you want to follow that or go?
The only comment I wanted to make is that absolutely part of the concern around species diversity does apply to our native forest as well. We have a great deal of, of land that we're custodians of, that we won't be in good, as good shape in a hundred years as it is today. And to do that, it means we need to be really mindful about how we replant when there's opportunities to add diversity because our native forest is also losing diversity. You're probably familiar with, there was a, a newly emergent uh, hemlock looper that wiped out many acres along the North Shore. When it got, got to Coquitlam, we don't have big dead stands. It's because we didn't have single species stands of hemlock here. So it's really important for us to make sure that we're looking at both the street trees and park trees, but also the forested trees. With that in mind, what will this look like in a hundred years? And that's going to take some interesting work because as you've mentioned, hemlock now, or I, I don't know, we're still planting them, but we have to be really careful not to plant blocks of anything. And then we don't have now, my dad would have been a hundred this year. He tells stories of, of when uh, he was a teenager, our forests here were thirty percent white pine. There's virtually no white pine or other pines in our native forest. So there's work to be done and that's the part of the industry to step up to make sure that we end up with our forest staying as diverse as possible as well as our street trees.
So, so I still have a comment to make following that up. Uh, you, you're right, you know, if you look at, I think the, let me go back and say there ought to be collaboration between what we're doing and what the province is doing. Because we know with hemlock, when they do the, you know, when they cut the forests, you know, from the industry, from the forestry industry, they replace with hemlock. One is cheaper, two is a fast grower, but we also know that it's problematic, right? So people are going to go to the low hanging fruit. So the policy needs to, not only, because if they limited the number of hemlocks that they are planting, then the people that are selling are going to have the ones that everyone is supposed to have, right? So there ought to be like a collaboration with the province as well. So that they don't counter the work that we are trying to do to get the, you know, the diverse in, in, in species. And they're going with one and it's going to be the best seller. So we lose at the end of the day, right? So thank you for that comment.
Hey, good. Go to councillor John Look followed by councillor Kim.
Good. I'm going to pick up where councillor Mandeau left off on the, on the cash and loot piece because I just, I just want to be, uh, clarification here on this. We're not really talking about cash and loot system. We are talking where there, there's not an option here for, for an applicant to buy out. This is, say a developer cuts down their tree. Um, one tree's on the property, they've cut it down, they're going to pay a security deposit to the city. They've replaced the tree, they're going to get their security deposit back. We would only do a cash and loot in an extraordinary situation where geotechnical, some reason that that tree cannot actually be planted. We would then keep the money. So I think the, maybe the language and the, the draft strategy needs to change. Because when I think cash and loot, that's the language we use around our childcare reserve. Where we say to developers, if you don't build the childcare, you have the option to pay us money instead. There's not an option here. This is a, you need to plant this, we're going to hold the money and if you can't plant it, we're going to be keeping the money.
It's a little bit more nuanced than that. Maybe Andrew has a thought or Lanny wants to describe how more complicated it is.
I'll go to Mr. England on that one.
Yeah, through the chair to councillor John, like, yeah, and to add to um, what you've articulated. This is more around, um, so if some, if a developer is consolidating lots to build, let's just say as an example, medium density apartment, six story wood frame. And uh, let's say it's half an acre, the site. There's a, a relative amount of trees that would provide the right amount of canopy cover on a site of that size. But realistically, as much, um, trying to do their very best to create places to plant, et cetera. They may only be able to, again, so it's not a buyout. You do have to plant trees on that property. But realistically, for the success of those trees in the long term, instead of maybe twelve trees, you can only plant eight trees. And so that in lieu, and maybe there's another terminology, the four that are not going to be able to be sustainably planted on that site, that's where the money is collected to plant trees elsewhere to compensate for that.
That's fine. I, I, I completely support that direction. I just want it to be clear, like we're, what you've just outlined is not a where the developer is just purely of their own discretion saying, yeah, you know, I just don't feel like planting trees easier for me to buy out. There is a legitimate reason as to why those trees cannot be planted. That, that is the direction I want to see. So it just, it's, it's, I think where at least where I'm getting a little tripped up is, I just want to ensure that the messaging we're projecting there is that this is not a optional buyout system. This is a, you, the applicant have to prove, perhaps it's because again, assembly, bigger lot, why you can't be planting those trees. I do also think, and councillor Marsden raised it uh, earlier. I don't want us to just be sitting on a huge amount of money. I think we need to be very clear that if we're collecting cash, it's going into a tree planting reserve and that is the money that then goes towards our public boulevard planting, our tree spree programs. So there is that one to one connection where if legitimately trees can't be planted on this lot, but here they're going on those public boulevards now. So support the direction of that. I think it's good. Have we thought about the nuance around the different types of trees? Are we thinking that this is just plainly going to be a one to one or are we going to recognize? Okay, this was a really mature, large tree that has more value versus something that is perhaps really small. Is that something that would be too, is there too much burden to administer that? Or are we thinking about some flexibility there in terms of what we might be able to collect and then give to the developer um, when they're looking at planting?
Mr. Strickland.
Through the chair to councillor John, like I think one of the things that has worked well in the what's in the zoning bylaw now, which leads to the program up on Burke Mountain for um, replanting or planting requirements, is the flexibility around the um, the stature of the trees that are selected. So we, we put them in categories, so small stature, medium stature, large stature, which is reflective of if they grow to their ultimate lifespan, how large will they be, small, medium or large? And depending on the selection, if they're smaller, then you plant more of those trees. If it's medium, you plant a few less and large, you don't need quite as many because they will create more canopy over time. So there's some flexibility there.
Yeah, I think that, that's an important nuance to have in here as well. Uh, okay. So that all sounds good. Having a target, I think is important and, and I recognize just saying forty percent has its challenges because we, we could, let's say we achieve that forty percent. Well, it might mean that areas like Burke Mountain, Westwood Plateau that border thousands of hectares of forests, they're going to have maybe fifty percent coverage where other areas might be looking at twenty five. So having that blanket metric, I, I, I'm not overly supportive of that because there is nuance in our city. We have areas in the city right now that have a really good tree canopy coverage and we have areas that do not. So there needs to be some kind of north star that we are following here. Is it that we're looking to plant a certain number of trees per year? Is it that we're looking at something where yes, there's nuance that can be part of it, but there has to be a guiding principle here if we're not just going to set a specific target. So I do, I do want to see something in the strategy that is aspirational and gives us a goal to strive for, even if it's not a specific metric. Because we've touched on this here. Data can tell different stories, you know, where Burke Mountain has a high tree canopy coverage. Burke Mountain also has some of the highest loss of tree canopy coverage. These are both true. So let's, let's make sure the nuance is incorporated into that. Um, partnership with SD forty, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add to nuance in terms of the um, metric. Part of the hesitation to just adopt the metro um, guidelines of forty percent is that there's not a real good certainty about how many years that would take us to get to. And there's a real risk that it would take us until twenty fifty, twenty seventy five. And we don't, there hasn't been the work yet to identify when that would turn around, where we would stop losing and start gaining. And it feels like the wrong metric to focus this kind of critical work on, whereas we have very targeted and aspirational metrics that will come out during the development of the implementation plan that will all be targeted at balancing that. We're not, we're not just slacking. We want some pretty ambitious goals that we can then be held to. But the, the metric of tree canopy cover citywide just seems very misleading to, for people to think that like some neighboring municipalities have, have said, we're going to hit the forty percent, but we're not going to do it till twenty seventy five. That doesn't feel like it's appropriate for this level of more, sure, it's aspirational, but if I'm not going to be alive anymore, it kind of doesn't motivate me much. But all of the things that we can do and will be outlined in the implementation plan will be connected to metrics that we're pretty confident are both aspirational, but also reasonable to achieve.
Okay. Are, are we thinking at all in the strategy about to like green corridors of, and councillor Hodge touched on it, where we're seeing development, bringing the trees in the boulevards. It's great, but you get that very manicured look. But how still do those, those areas we still need that are just like pure forests that might be in an area people are living, like how, how that strategically fits into the strategy here? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I'd say the, sorry, through the chair, the PRCF has a, a trail master plan that guides where we need connectivity and where there's opportunity for that. There's also obviously a parkland acquisition strategy. So there's a lot of processes that are already embedded in our work that is looking exactly at that, making sure that we don't miss the opportunities. Sorry, something else you were going to say, Lanny?
Yeah, I would just add that um, the city's uh, history of, a lot of the city is relatively recently developed. And so there's been legislation in place that has kept a lot of those green corridors in place that actually come to parks to manage and those are the creek corridors. And Coquitlam has a lot of creek corridors. It's just the nature of this part of the world. And so we have a pretty good connected system. Kathy referred to a couple of them earlier um, in the presentation on some of the highlights of some of the great benefits we have of our system now, like the Hoy Scott system, where the city um, manages almost the entire corridor as parkland and there's other uh, examples of that. Burke Mountain is another one. So we have a lot of those green corridors. And they, we have the Coquitlam River corridor as well, and we have other park, parkland that's associated with those corridors.
Okay. Thanks for that. It's important, like with strategies always, that they, that they talk to each other, not just to be siloed out. So I think that's an important piece that they be able to inform each other. Um, SD forty three, absolutely. And I think too, as we look towards more multi-use usage of SD forty three properties, I mean, I can see a future as schools develop. We're going to be partnering with SD forty three. Um, of course, a lot around, I think athletic fields, but also there's those partnership opportunities around just park space, forest space too. I know we prob, we want to be careful around not just saying we're going to plant trees on SD forty three's property and then be responsible for the operational piece, which is them. But just thinking too, I think that line between our properties, just as we densify as a city, it's going to blur. So thinking long term about how, how that might look. And then last piece is just around some of the master development plans in our urban areas. I know, you know, I know we're not going to be able to have that really high tree canopy coverage in our downtown core here and, and Coquitlam. But where I am optimistic is if you take that aerial view of, of Coquitlam Centre and, and along North Road, you see a whole lot of paved parking lot. And there's real opportunities there. I know it's not going to be the giant trees that we're going to plant there because they're going to likely be on top of underground parkades. But thinking to, is there still that space for, again, park space, some trees to be able to replace what right now is just a concrete heat sink? Thanks.
Okay, see nodding. Okay, good. Uh, next we'll go to councillor Kim, followed by councillor Towner, then councillor Asmussen.
Yes, uh, thank you Chair Hodge, uh, Ms. Raham, thank you very much uh, for the uh, report. Um, and all the work that's gone into this so far. Um, you know, I, I share a lot of similar concerns with my colleagues. Um, yeah, I know all of us have door knocked probably across almost every street in the city and uh, the streets along southwest Coquitlam are a lot cooler than the ones in other areas of the city. Um, uh, so you know, uh, it, it's certainly something that we've experienced ourselves. Um, I, I get the, 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 the discussion on the targets of the forty percent. Um, my thing on that is just, and I, and I can appreciate a, a different approach might um, result in different outcomes. Um, but trying to, you know, work to see what that, what the goal could be in the terms of a different approach. Um, you know, whether it's through modeling or not or whatnot, uh, but the types of KPIs that you mentioned, what do those look like? Um, so that we can all kind of get an understanding of what we're trying to achieve. Um, and throughout as time progresses, so um, I, I can appreciate the fact that a blanket forty percent canopy might not be helpful. Uh, especially when we have very urban downtown cores uh, outwards to uh, um, to our more rural areas as well. So trying to get a better understanding of that as we proceed, I think um, along this time, uh, process uh, will be something I'm looking for. Um, regarding some of the um, points here, um, I agree with the discussion on the cash and loot. Um, to me, uh, being very prescriptive on where that money would go and what it's used for, I think is, is, is key. Um, uh, councillor John, it kind of touched on it when you were talking about the different types of trees and I appreciate the answer, Mr. England. But I know, I go back to some more recent experiences that this committee, council has had. Um, and there was a, a project where it had a very large sequoia tree. Um, and just for the, the fact of the type of tree it was and the history that it had, it was a very big discussion around the table. So how do we account for some of these trees that have that type of value? Um, I know that another project that came on and decided to keep a couple of trees. Um, and uh, you know, so there, and we were all very um, supportive of that. Um, in this age of this, of the smooze, um, you know, let's face it, if tomorrow every single family homeowner decides that they're going to subdivide into four, we've already seen through past experience, more recent experience, that the impervious surfaces in addition to the trees are going to be seriously impacted. So um, my, my, where I'm coming from now is like, how do we work to manage this type of process? Because we spent so much time with the new legislation and this is now the new reality that we have to face. And I'm hoping through this education and other aspects of this plan that uh, we are going to find that uh, um, I guess that new balance. Um, because I, I think there, you know, it's, the, the smooze are going to cause some issues in our more uh, mature neighborhoods. Um, so I'm, I'm trying to think about, you know, what are the types of incentives? Um, whether, if, if it's a, a, an old tree like the sequoia that we had, what would be the incentive for the owner or new owner or whoever it might be to keep it? Um, perhaps there's a, a tree rescue type of program. Perhaps there's um, other types of, you know, what are the incentives that we could, you know, think about? If someone decides to plan in advance, three years in, in advance to, to buy, purchase some trees or, or plant mature trees. We've discussed this around the table before. Um, and if there is an owner that wants to replant mature trees, what, you know, how do we encourage that? As opposed to um, just making it a number of two trees gone and then, you know, maybe, you know, what is it, a ratio of new trees coming back, however it might be? Um, how do we, with this new approach or this approach that we look at, um, really solve some of the nuanced situations that are described? Um, so that's how I'm hoping this, uh, we could, we all continue this process to formulate whatever, you know, how this plan continues to be developed. Um, so I'm wondering if, like, I know that we're still somewhat early in this process. Uh, will there be time for that type of refinement during this course?
Through the chair, I'm optimistic we have um, four. Through the chair, I'm optimistic we have formulated an interdepartmental working group. Some of those creative ideas can be fleshed out or at least given a check, we need to work on this more, or yeah, that's not going to work at all. But it's a good example of the heavy lifting that still has to be done as we head in towards a final draft.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that because, um, and I know, because at the city level, all the public trees, we, I know that we're going to be rigorous and rigorous in, in our actions to plant trees and to, to spur that. It's just more of the, how we continue to incentivize private owners to, to do the same. So um, I know that there are going to be a couple more instances where this gets refined and there'll be more discussions with key stakeholders as well. So that we could continue to refine this, correct?
Yes, sir. Through the chair, we have, we're working now to schedule a working group, meeting, a workshop early in the new year, and then as many as required.
Okay, yeah, I'll leave it there, but I, I appreciate that and, you know, certainly, uh, thank you for your answers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have councillor Towner, followed by councillor Aspenson.
Thank you Chair. Um, I want to start off just by saying, you know, climate change and health and livability and mental health and wellness are all, and how trees play an impact there are all, they're very, all those things are serious matters that require serious consideration. So I value and appreciate all the work that staff have put into this report. I know today isn't the draft strategy, it's just early findings and you're getting impact. So thank you for your work on this. Before I go any further in my comments, I just wanted, there's been a lot of reference to Metro Vancouver today and coming, I'm on the board of Metro Vancouver. And a report in our agenda for Friday is a report that's about the tree canopy, acknowledging that recent changes to provincial housing legislation will challenge local and regional tree canopy cover objectives. And they're going to do a study on, to assess the effects that this provincial legislation is going to have on tree canopy and identify possible solutions and strategies moving forward. And maybe a toolkit for municipalities. So that's coming. Everybody's aware of the impact that this provincial legislation has on our, our trees. Coquitlam, we've been called and referred to as leaders in housing affordability, diversity, addressing the middle, missing middle for years. We, we, we are recognized as leaders. I also think that we can be leaders in addressing trees and the need of trees and getting creative and seizing opportunities and incentivizing to get, to maintain and get more trees coverage in our city. I think we can do both, be leaders in both housing and leaders in addressing the urban tree canopy. I have lots of notes, so I'm not going to repeat too much of what my colleague said. But I want to start off just by commending staff on the success of the tree, tree, tree spree program. It's my understanding ten thousand trees were planted in twenty twenty two and between five and six thousand new trees were planted in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And I don't know about this year, the same. And over two hundred volunteers each year have been engaged in tree planting initiatives and, and this initiative. And I think that's commend, commendable. And I do, um, I, I do, I, I do feel strongly on having goals that we can measure, like a metric, and this is one metric that we can measure. How many new trees are we planting each year? And how are we engaging the community? We can't do this alone. We need residents to participate and speak up and give us feedback and, and all that. I also, moving forward, I, I don't, none of us here really fully understand yet the impact that the schmooze, the small scale housing mandates are going to have on our neighborhoods. And I'm just wondering if going forward, we could have a policy or a metric that if the project impacts X percent of lot coverage, then there's room for two trees or one tree or five trees. Depending on the coverage, I don't know. I don't know if we can be that prescriptive, but if we can get, I mean, I've driven in other cities and I've seen some of the schmooze and there's not room for even a, a rose bush because it's just the setbacks and it's, they wouldn't get any sun anyways. So I just, if our lot coverage is less and the setbacks and if there's room, then I think we should put that into the policies if we can. I'm really excited about exploring opportunities with the school district. I live in older Coquitlam and the, some of the lots are really big. I mean, we can't mandate it, but I think exploring opportunities there for school age kids to adopt trees and make sure they're watered. Or I don't engage kids in, in the trees on these big schoolyards, I think would be really good. And I also wanted to ask if, do, does the city, do we have any kind of mandate or framework? So when we're building, you know, the Burke Mountain Park, the, up on the hill and then the school site and Fraser Mills, brand new sites, do we just plant as many trees as possible or do we have a, do we have a framework that we follow on our own sites as far as getting trees in?
Ms. England?
Thank you. Through the chair to councillor Towner, great question. I would say it, it is a little bit like you suggested, trying to get as many trees as we can on every one of those sites. Keeping in mind the different amenities that we're providing on Burke Mountain Athletic Park as an example, we're building a track and artificial turf field, tennis courts. So within the landscape um, that remains, then we, we maximize the tree planting and cover over time. And where possible, that site's another good example. There is a remnant natural area as well. And so the idea is to plant that area up so it'll have full canopy cover over time.
Perfect. So we are paying attention to the, the lot, the sites and then planting the trees where appropriate and we're able to. So, okay. Uh, I support the cash and lieu idea, system. I don't know if I like the name either. I do support renaming it, you know, tree planting reserve or urban canopy initiatives or call it something else. And only when there's a legitimate reason for a tree not being able to be planted or more than one tree, then the cash. So I do support the, the dialogue that's been there um, already. So I also wanted to just ask about incentives versus um, mandates. The, there was twenty five hundred trees distributed to property owners, I read in the report. But those property owners took those trees voluntarily, correct? Okay, because I was recently in another municipality, I won't name the municipality. And they went out and they spray painted holes on residents' front yards and said, you have to plant a tree there. And the residents were so taken aback that they just didn't water it and they killed it. The, the trees didn't survive because they were told to plant these trees. So I, I'm just sharing that story. I was stunned that that would happen. What a waste of a tree. And how incentives and encouragement and all that, it works so much better than being told what to do. But I, I also think it works on the, in the other direction. The two trees per year, you know, it's been said that it's arbitrary, but I live in older Coquitlam, fairly close to Monday Park, lots of big trees. And I know of people, I know of one person in my neighborhood that within a couple of months of bringing their newborn home, a huge tree in their backyard, a big, big, big branch, blew off during a storm, landed on their roof, six feet from their baby's window, and they got really anxious about it. So they cut the tree down. And I think, I talked about mental health and wellness in my preamble. I think that we have to be able to give residents the peace of mind that if they don't feel comfortable with a tree, that they can take it down. I really, we have rules about off-leash dogs. There's people in our city that absolutely are so scared of dogs. We have rules around that, so someone else can go to a park and feel that there's not going to be a dog. We have crosswalks and lighting and lots of other things in our city to make people feel safe and it's livable. And I think trees, as much as we love trees and we want trees, we don't want them to be a source of stress and anxiety and non-livability, if that's a word, but um, I think you know what I mean. So um, I don't know, I could, what else do I want to say? I think maybe that's it. I, I like where this is going. We, I, I'd rather have meaningful policies and strategies in place than just ticking a box. Things where we can engage our residents and make a meaning, a meaningful impact. Seizing every opportunity, engaging the public. You know how we have adopted trail, adopt a street, pick up the litter? I, I've adopted six catch basins on my yard or on my street to keep them free of leaves so the water drains. Do we have any adopt programs for the wa, the, the watering bags for trees on boulevards? Could we engage neighborhoods that way? Is it, you can adopt these trees and make sure there's water in the bags, like anything like that? Is that something that's been thought of?
Absolutely. It's part of the lo, the long list of things we can do that would be pragmatically make a difference, yes.
Okay. And I'll just end on, I, I feel so thankful that I live near Monday Park and I go into those trails as often as I can. And I, I feel very lucky that there's a, every Saturday morning, there's a Monday Park run. In Monday Park, it's only five K. And everybody I talk to who participates in that, what they say is, you know, you exit off of Comal Lake into the forest and you just, you just feel different. It's not about the run, it's about being in those trees. And how much people value forests and trees and health and wellness and everything that they provide. So I love trees. Um, I think there's a lot we can do, but it's finding that balance between mandates and incentives and health and livability. So thank you for your work on this. I look forward to the draft strategy coming forward later this year.
Okay, next we have councillor Aspenson and there Mayor Stewart, who's joining us online.
Well, overall, thank you. I support the direction of this report. A lot of good work's gone into this. Just some overall comments and stuff. Going back, thing was mentioned by councillor Martin at the beginning, the tree canopy and how it's more of an arbitrary number. And I look at the thirty three percent inside the containment boundary, outside the containment were fifty two percent. But when I compare it to Vancouver, Burnaby, New West, Richmond and so forth, they virtually have no containment boundary. So we're getting penalized by a containment boundary saying that we have less in our area. So that's what I, I, I don't like about the Metre Van report. It's arbitrary. I think in the report you talk, it's, it's not feasible to meet the forty percent in this time. But I also think that, I truly believe that we're fifty two percent, because I take in the whole city, the whole area. And unlike those areas, we're quite lucky. You know, we have Burke Mountain, Pine Cove, the original parts, that's thirty eight thousand hectares of land. Above that, we then have Garibaldi, which is a hundred and ninety five thousand. We have the Coquitlam watershed, which is another twenty two thousand air, trees that are surrounding us that these other areas don't have. So we have a lot of trees in our area. Um, so that one there, I just find it's a little too arbitrary. We're doing a good job. The diversity of trees, mature trees take longer to grow, they're bigger cost. Also, if you do order them, you don't know if they're going to survive or grow to the height that you want them when you want them. The other thing we have to be careful, you mentioned about controversial trees in Greece. But we can't move those trees here because they may work there because they're a different type of tree, a different climatic zone. And we've sort of said in our latest, uh, changes to our forestry, tree planting is native trees. That we're not, we want to have mostly native trees within our area here. So ours that, for that, have a different growing pattern, different root structure. So there's differences that we have to be realistic to. And so that's the area um, that I think that we have to be careful of. And um, it's difficult. I've looked at a lot of developers. You know, by the time they get their approvals, they don't know when they're going to get their approvals or get approved, to pre-order trees. But the problem I've seen a lot of developers have me is that there's such a demand for trees that they can't even get them when they're required to. And some of the developers are going to have to come back later. We put up bonds for that. So there's, and we have to figure out why is the industry so small that it's not supplying the demand? So I, I think that's another issue just outside of our city, but I think it's all cities, all areas of the province. And even, we've been trying to purchase trees out of Washington State at times to bring them up, to help fill the void, which causes some other risks and problems with it. So that's the one I, I think, um, we, we mentioned, I don't think people realize the small housing legislation, the effect it's going to have on tree canopy cover, but also groundwater infiltration. Now, one thing we did do is we put on s, storage detention tanks on every lot to help retain some groundwater infiltration on all those lots. That will also save the city in their costs of maintaining or expanding our stormwater by keeping it on lot and keeping that groundwater infiltration. That's one thing we do. Even our adaptation of schmooze gives us a little more green space around it, but not a lot. So when you look at that. So schmooze is a, is a problem. You know, you, you, you talked about development, the northeast, tree replanting. Now, we have tree replanting in all our areas of the city, development areas. There was a report a number of years ago, and I'd like us to get back to showing this in our reports. We had a report a number of years showing the Coquitlam low heat area that we're at a four to five to one replacement of trees in that area. It may not be the same, but there are trees all being replaced in these developments. I think we used to get in reports, how many trees are coming down, how many trees are being replaced. It hasn't been showing up on that same number. I think for the public and ourselves, it's good to know that replacement number going forward all the time. So I'd like to see that come back as a metric that we all can look at. But you also mentioned like Burke Mountain, and I think people have to realize, okay, there's three trees needs required per lot. Now, people in old Coquitlam, they're all in sixty six foot lots. So planting two trees in your backyard is not a big deal, right? But most of the, well, schmooze wiped it out, but prior to schmooze, most of your lots were thirty three and forty two foot lots. Planting two trees in the backyard of a thirty three and a forty two lot is quite a bit different. Specifically, when we did the old tree bylaw, we realized that we had a lot of complaints from neighbors because people planted most of their trees right on the property lines and affected neighbors. So in our bylaw, our tree bylaw requires a setback from the backyard, side yards and the house, which means you're planting two trees basically in the center of a backyard on a thirty three, a small backyard lot becomes unusable. So there's nice intent, but for livability of the people that live and use those backyards, it's not a usable backyard. So I think we have to be understanding of, of those issues also. And that's where the, the cash and lieu tree retention or whatever comes into place where we can, because in your report, it does state where you're looking at to taking those extra money for trees and planting within our existing parks, open areas that can be treated up more. So you already have in the draft report an idea and analysis of where you see you can use that funds to increase tree canopy cover. That's going to be in the containment area, correct? Yes. So that works well. So um, and that goes down to the existing tree bylaw. And it's worked extremely well since about two thousand nine, I was here for that bylaw. People have not willingly cut down trees that people thought it was done. People have planted more trees than ever they've taken down. But we have a municipality to the next of us and a friend of my daughter's, I got to talk to her. They have, you have to go to permit, take down any tree and talk about bureaucracy. So she had to go to the city, she had to take out a permit. And in that permit, she had to go hire an arborist to write a report to put into the permit, and she had to pay for that permit. She then had to have that permit submitted. Then a inspector for the city had to come out and inspect her site on her property. She had two trees that she was afraid were going to fall down. And so the city then agreed that the two trees could come down. So the, to take down the trees in the arborist's report, they required her, since she was taking down two trees, to plant four replacement trees at a cost of twelve hundred dollars per tree. The total bill for her to do all that, and she had to put up a bond, remember, and get her bond back, was around sixteen thousand dollars. I don't think our public should have to go through something like that for that event. So I, I think it's worked well. Let's leave it alone. Let's keep it working well. People aren't willingly taking down the trees. The big issue you're going to have on tree loss isn't going to become from current property owners or landowners taking down the trees. And most people like their trees unless they think it's like this late, it's going to be a hazard. In old Coquitlam, where you're going to lose your trees is because of schmooze. We didn't ask for it, we wouldn't want it. But the province has eliminated our ability to do any tree management within the schmooze. So when you get into old Coquitlam and we're going to lose tree canopy in that area, it's, it's not by the city, it's by provincial legislation that once again, we were not consulted on. This government doesn't consult. This government doesn't consult, they had every one of our staff that was consulting under non-disclosure agreements that they couldn't even talk to other staff members about the issue. And even the what our staff had talked to them about, they ignored anyways and gave us this legislation. So, um, the other part, we, we talk about rooftop trees, we've, and that type of things. We've had a developer come in and say, you know, we can do that, but once again, it's gonna increase costs because we have to create a, a, we had to build up for a stronger reinforced area to handle the weight. We also know about roots and membranes. For example, out here in Ducannon Square, we had trees planted and we had a membrane. The trees broke through the membrane and destroyed the membrane. We rebuilt the Ducannon Square earlier than we were supposed to at a big cost, but if you notice, we're not putting those same type of trees back in there because we can't afford to have that membrane. So when you get into these buildings, that's another issue you have to look at. Also comes down to, as mentioned, our sequoia tree, the developer did look at trying to save that tree, but it's just not the tree, it's the root zone. You had like a ten meter or more root zone around that in the middle of the lot that made it almost impossible for the person to effectively, cost-effectively develop that property. So there's a lot of nuances that go into saving trees or not saving trees. And so it's, I think you mentioned earlier, Kathleen, that there's, it can be complicated at times from, from both of you in this endeavor. Um, but I think this sets out a good direction. You've done a very good job, the public's been consulted, I think the consult, the public overall is agreeable with the direction and the draft report. Um, I'm, I, I can agree that the lieu of, you can change the name of it to somewhere, but I do think, especially in the, the small housing legislation, that's where we're gonna get the probably the biggest uptake on that, and I think that's why staff recommended that, because they saw this, the schmooze, just eliminating the ability to plant any type of trees in that area and to replace that somewhere in the city to re, to bring that back. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm fine the way the draft is right now, I, I don't see any need to change any parts to it, and that's kudos to you and all the people involved that had done all the good work in bringing this forward to us. And, um, that's it, these people can now wake up, that's been too long of us talking problem.
Thank you, and thank you for acknowledging that councillor Asberson. Uh, next we have Mayor Stewart.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Reinheimer. I wonder if it's possible to get a, a, a newer number as far as our tree canopy, it may have changed while councillor Asberson was talking. I, I, I sent, I sent a couple of pictures to city clerk, uh, I don't know if they uh, saw them, but I'll, I'll be referring to them in a couple of minutes. Oh, yep, they've got one, oh, there you go. Okay, so I'll, I'll start with this part because the picture's on the, um, I, I often wonder about these large spaces within, uh, I think it's Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure land. This is the Cape Horn Interchange and the land, uh, near the Low Heat Highway approaching the United Boulevard, uh, that's the circle at the top, uh, United Boulevard Interchange. Um, acres of, uh, land, some of which is fettered by, uh, overhead, uh, transmission lines, but much of which doesn't have that limitation. Uh, uh, and I wonder if there's something that can be done to, um, have the, some forest, some, some green planted on these large spaces of pretty much just gravel. Um, it would, from my perspective, have some cooling effect, but also, um, really demonstrate that we are serious about trying to make up for the, uh, emissions from motor vehicles. Nope, I can't see if anyone's at the, uh, present, presentation microphone.
Ms. Reinheimer, did you want to comment?
Sorry, the only comment I could, I could make is that as part of developing the tree planting plan, those are the kinds of areas that we'll try to make sure that we have sorted out where there's capacity or where there's, where we could gain permission to plant trees if it's somebody else's property, but those are good examples of something that over time could make quite an impact, especially, as I say, related to the road, the busy roadways.
Thank you, and, uh, I'll refer to the small rectangle on the left, that's about, uh, four acres of, uh, Cape Horn Elementary Schools property. And I have the same question, but I know that's been covered before. Um, so I encourage us to encourage the, some measure of collaboration with School of Street Forty-three and other educational facilities, Douglas College, et cetera, um, to see what can be done on, uh, property that, uh, has, for which there are no plans for the next twenty years, uh, and see if we can grab some carbon. Um, I'll go to the second photo, and it comes by way of explanation, I know councillor Mandew asked for, um, my comments related to this, and this is a challenge that some communities now face. This is a, a street, I think it's Second Avenue, might be Fourth Avenue in Vancouver, uh, East Vancouver. It's, um, not atypical of, uh, streets, and, and I remember a conversation I had with a group of residents and a couple of architects, uh, about ten years ago about, uh, how to manage trees on private property. Now, this particular street has street, uh, street trees further down the road, but, uh, in this, uh, this photo, for example, shows a half dozen homes, some of which were built uh, seventy-five years ago, some of which are modern, um, and no trees on their private property. Now, there are, there is space to put trees, but, uh, the answer I got back from some of those residents was, um, I was actually speaking about the program that we use to encourage the public to plant trees on their, in their own yards and, uh, the take-up that we've seen, which I think has been significant. And the question I got asked was, do, do you, do you force them to take the tree or how does it work? And when I questioned that, they said, well, no one in Vancouver is gonna plant a tree on their own property voluntarily, because once you plant it, you, um, you'll be incurring the kind of cost that councillor Asberson just mentioned, sixteen thousand dollars or something, if you have to move it for whatever reason or take it down for whatever reason, it's no longer yours, e- even though you planted it on your own property. And those challenges, I think we really, um, I, I think have hit kind of a sweet spot where we do, we, we can encourage the planting of trees on private property, uh, and, uh, we get very little pushback from residents largely because, and I've heard the comment myself, we don't punish them, the residents who plant trees on their property, we don't punish them, uh, for doing what we ask them to do. Uh, whereas in Vancouver, they recognize that if you ever do plant a tree, uh, Vancouver will punish you by making it so that the tree is now public property. Um, and as a result, I, I think we end up with far more trees planted on the private property, uh, partly because our, our lots are bigger, these are thirty-three foot lots, but, uh, also simply because, um, residents, one of my neighbors, uh, yeah, this was eighteen years ago, I wasn't mayor yet, and there was a discussion about, uh, perhaps prohibiting the cutting down of private trees. Um, he took down all his trees, and I asked him, because he, I thought he really liked the trees, and he says, y- yeah, but City Hall wants to prohibit it. So he took, took them all down, and we never did, uh, put in place a prohibition on that, but, uh, it is human nature, we want, uh, I think, uh, lots of residents want trees in their neighborhood and don't necessarily want them on their own property, particularly if the perspective of the city is that once the tree is there, it can't be removed, even if, uh, it becomes dangerous or even if it, it's, it, yeah, limits the use of the property by the property owners. So I, I'm, I really like the report, I think it's, it's, um, this is a really important discussion. Uh, we know that trees in, uh, in neighborhoods create microclimate reality that, um, lowers the temperatures, uh, we know that. That said, we also know it's not as much about carbon, uh, because ninety-nine point something percent of the province is not designated for urban development. Uh, so we do need to, uh, make sure that urban development takes place, uh, particularly in areas served by transit. Um, and we are a community that has, uh, public transit now, and we owe it to make sure that we, uh, put in place the kind of, uh, housing densities that will support the transit and, and reduce GHG emissions through transportation. At the same time, I think there's, there's room to, uh, try to find a way to, uh, uh, plant, uh, trees, particularly, uh, street trees, um, but also trees on private property wherever possible. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to seeing this process, uh, move forward. Uh, I, I medically can't, uh, attend today, so I thank you very much for your, um, deference to, uh, my rambling, thank you.
Thank you, and for a second time, I have councillor Meserel.
Yeah, just quickly, thank you Chair Hodge. There's a lot of talk about a boogeyman here, that if, uh, if we do a change of the bylaw and we say you can't cut down trees, which I don't think anybody here said, I didn't say it either, I just said, why do we have to? Um, that all of a sudden, people are gonna go around chopping down trees. Go to slide four if you, if you please. I would like to know if it's possible to find out this information so that we can make a decision based on data and, and an analysis of that data, which of these municipalities have instituted a bylaw that there is a penalty if you cut down a tree on your private property? And one that bylaw was instituted, did we see an immediate effect in those, in those municipalities right before the bylaw came into effect, that they lost a whole lot of their tree canopy because residents were afraid that they were no longer, as been quoted around this table here, own the tree, it would be public property? I would like to know that. If the answer is yes, this will happen, then I, I am, I want to get the most tree canopy as fast as possible with the metrics that are provided in this report, it will factor into my decision-making. But if the answer is no, I think that's information we should know. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Asberson for a second time.
I forgot to raise about maintenance of trees, uh, and the type of trees. Um, I know a number of years ago, we went down to, to Portland on a trip about transportation and stuff like that, and we were looking around and we're going down Main Street, these big beautiful trees, and they were London plane trees. And a couple of these said, yeah, we gotta, we should go back to Vancouver, we should recommend equipment that we start applying, and the guy from Portland goes, no, 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 no. And I went, he went, he said, you see the lot, size the leaves on those things? He said, you know, the maintenance that we have to go through, the, the, uh, our hatch patients, our roads and everything, caused a huge problem for them. So one of the things we always have to be careful about, when you look right now, in the last little while, the amount of cost that we incur, which is good, in cleaning up and maintaining trees. And the people, a lot of people that have single-family homes or have trees have to have the maintenance of, you know, we have a lot of people in high-rises or townhouses that don't have to maintain trees themselves. So I, I think we also have to look at that also, when you're looking at, uh, people and trees, the amount of work and maintenance that goes into having those trees on your lot and looking after them. Um, I got a, a Japanese flowering church, it's beautiful, we planted it where it wouldn't be allowed to be planted today, close to our neighbors, and it has those beautiful pink, and comes off, and our neighbors hate it, looks beautiful though, but it, it causes a lot, a lot of maintenance, that one tree. And so, um, that's one of the things I think cognizant that we have to vote for the city and for people, is the amount of maintenance that goes in, looking after trees on city property and on people's own property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. So the presentation has been moved for receipt, it has been seconded, just before we do that, just quickly, next steps, I just a reminder where we are for next steps, this is just, again, just a committee, so we're all here to receive, so just.
So the plan is for us to, um, develop a draft, to bring back to council and the community with the hope of a final plan sometime, the end of T one in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, good, thank you. It was moved by, sorry councillor Marsden, seconded by councillor Asberson, all in favor? Any votes? That's right, thank you very much for the presentation, thank you for everybody who came up to, to hear the presentation.
We're here today at Coquitlam City Hall, and city staff have just presented city council with a report on the urban forest management strategy. So this is an environmental report talking about the future of the urban forest in the city of Coquitlam. I'm here with Dale Lindtott from Saint Lawrence Anglican Church, and Dale is also a member of the Metro Vancouver Alliance. So Dale, can you tell us a little bit about why, as a faith-based group, you're here today when this is an environmental issue?
Well, faith and environment are inextricably tied together, we need to care for our planet. It's a profound calling as a Christian to live out that, live out that, um, commitment to looking after the planet, and that includes making sure that the trees in our local community are prioritized, that they're not, um, they play such a vital role for our health, our mental health, our spiritual well-being. And I think, uh, I wanted to hear what's going on because these decisions and this plan have profound implications for the future of our city, for its livability, and I think it's just important to be aware of what's going on and, uh, stand up for what we think is a, a really vital and important concern, that is preserving and protecting our urban canopy.
Thank you so much Dale for sharing your thoughts, it's bringing together social justice and environmental justice, so really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here with Lori Austin, and Lori is a member of Protect Coquitlam's Urban Forest. So Lori, you were just in city council chambers, listening to a report that was being presented by staff to city council on the urban forest. Can you tell us a little bit about your thoughts on, on what you heard today?
Well, I was really encouraged to hear a lot of support for the urban forest by all the councillors, a lot of good ideas were shared. Um, I was particularly interested in discussions around the tree bylaws, and, uh, I think that's an important area to continue to look at. Um, and, uh, there was several good ideas that came up, uh, from the councillors that I think need further research, and so I'm really glad this is just a preliminary, uh, report, and, and more research will be done, and hopefully a lot more community input. So I'm very interested to continue to keep in touch with Coquitlam staff and, uh, work together, uh, to make the best urban tree forest strategy that we can.
Well, thank you so much, so stay tuned, there's more to come. I'm here with James Bobbick at Coquitlam City Hall, and James is a Red Seal Certified Horticulturist as well as a founding member of the Wondrous Tree Fellowship. And so today, James, we've been talking about the urban forest and just seen a report that's gone forward to council. Can you tell us, there just seemed to be a lot of excitement in the room and a lot of people engaged, can you tell us why, why the excitement? Like, why are people so excited about the urban forest?
Well, I was really encouraged today to see council really asking a lot of important questions on trees and the value of trees in our, in our urban forests. And I think that just speaks to the idea that people are starting to understand just how valuable trees are and how much we need them, yeah, in our, in our, in our cities.
So why do we need them? Like, why are they so important?
Well, there are so many reasons why trees are really important. Of course, uh, one of them being stormwater mitigation, right? You know, more trees we have, the more permeable soil we have, uh, the less runoff, the less problems we're gonna have with, with flooding. Uh, we know that trees filter the air for us, uh, they clean the air, providing a, a, a better quality of air for us, uh, in our communities. But, uh, one of the big things, one of the maybe most important things, especially in an urban environment, is the ability for trees to cool the ambient temperatures, right? So to reduce that heat island effect that is, uh, that is becoming more prevalent as we get hotter, drier summers. Uh, we only have to look back at two thousand twenty-two where we had the heat dome, uh, to see how important trees are. We know that many of the fatalities, the, the six hundred people that sadly passed away during that heat dome, um, many of them lived, most of them lived, in areas that didn't have sufficient tree canopy coverage.
And also so important to our mental health as well, living in the city.
I think that's one of the things that's maybe not appreciated as much as it should be. Uh, just simply being around trees, uh, being in the forest, having street trees nearby your home, uh, just creates a, a much better, uh, mental health, it reduces stress, uh, makes you feel better, and physically, trees actually give us an immune, immune system boost, so, uh, very great for our health as well.
So we'll look forward to the urban forest management strategy going forward and hopefully some more public input into that.
Absolutely, uh, I feel very encouraged at this point, and I- Absolutely, uh, I feel very encouraged at this point, and I believe that the Coquitlam City Council, uh, will adopt, hopefully in the future, in their future, a very strong, uh, urban tree strategy.
Thanks so much, James.